Be there that if you think it's important to wear it. If not, that's your personal.
I personally, not A.S.K., personally, I see is if you want to wear it, you can wear it. If not, not.
Right, okay, very good. Thank you, sir. Anything else?
That's it.
I believe we have one online, this one.
Okay. The email or Zoom?
It was assumed, but she's no longer online.
Okay. All right, anyone else in the audience like Steve? Okay, let's, uh, what's the pleasure of the board? Do we, do we want to, uh, uh, we make a motion to strongly encourage public to wear masks, leave it at that and see, see how that goes? We can do nothing?
I, I think we, we need to do something.
Yeah.
Because if we do nothing, it's kind of sending a message that we don't care one way or the other. And I, I don't think any of us, uh, in the city feel that way. From what I've heard, we all agree that we need to do more. I just don't want to do too much. I, I, I support a proclamation like David just brought up. I think that's a good step in the right direction. I, I even would support encouraging the business owners to set up some kind of, uh, mask wearing protocol. I noticed that in the Piggly Wiggly yesterday, and I've been told that, that the owner of the pig has now moved forward and, and mandated that all their employees. And, and it was evident yesterday, there were, there were more precautions being followed. Uh, and that made me feel a little better as a shopper. So, I'm fine with moving in the direction of suggesting that we, uh, encourage. I like the idea of signs. I just don't like making a rule that you can't actually enforce. That's, that's where I'm at.
I agree, I agree, 100%.
I, I'm fine with doing some signage, uh, to encourage use of masks and also encourage, you know, we've got residents outside travel. I know I've, I've traveled outside and I've come back, I've tested twice.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and just, you know, encourage testing, encourage, um, signage with, with the use of masks. And I'm fine with putting them, you know, Reed Avenue or whatever.
You, are you, are you okay with, uh, passing a motion on a mercy declaration?
I, I don't, I'm not crazy about doing that. I, I don't, I don't want that word used, but, uh, I'm, I don't want, I wouldn't go that route. But I'd be willing to, um, make a motion to, you know, for signage and, and encouraging on that signage, use of masks.
You know, you put this cross out. Strongly encourage.
I just don't mean it, I wouldn't go that far, me personally, and that's, that's my vote. But I go down and I read more and, um, I'm not crazy about the purpose.
I, I, you know, this morning when I was reading what other areas are doing, um, it became quite evident that it doesn't matter if you go to the Gulf County Health Department website, the links there are going to send you eventually to the CDC site. And they may go one step further and send you first to the Florida Health Department, and then the Florida Health Department will relay you over to the CDC. What I've heard over and over in our meetings, and you've heard me say it, is I support the idea of going along with the guidance that is handed down from the CDC, the Florida Health Department, and our Gulf County Health Department. All of those, as of today, encourage the use of a cloth mask for everyone unless you can actually be outdoors and be in, uh, social distance. So, by supporting what we're talking about, the encouragement of the mask, all that's doing is going along with what's been suggested by the experts. Because anyone can look at the five of us and realize we're not experts on when to wear a mask and when, how to control the pandemic. I do believe the expert spokesperson for our city happens to be the mayor who's a pharmacist. So, I, I think we need to do something.
I agree, uh, I think that proclamation would be better right now. But, uh, I, I think we definitely need to encourage wear masks, signs, signs, I, I agree with putting signs around. And, uh, I just want to encourage the businesses to get involved. I mean, sometimes, um, people have to do what, just do what's right. And, uh, if you're looking for, for, uh, City of Fort St. Joe commissioners to make a decision for you about what you want to do as far as your health, I mean, where, where have we come to? You should be wanting to, um, having a situation on your own, not, not people forcing you to do what you, you need to do, what you think is right. And then what, what can I tell somebody to say if they put a mask on, they can't breathe anymore? Or, um, they don't like the way they feel, or they get overheated, you know? There's a lot of things that we have to think about when you're forcing somebody to do something. I mean, everybody's not going to agree, but I think right now is not the time to mandate, um, masks. I mean, let's, let's see what we can do after we get more numbers and, um, and, um, I think a proclamation would be, uh, fine. And that's my, that's my opinion.
So, so we, we, we need, uh, someone to make a motion that, that the city, uh, pass a proclamation that we encourage, uh, strongly encourage, uh, our citizens to wear masks and follow the CDC guidelines, which is wash your hands, social distance, wear a mask.
Yes, sir.
And we're just, I think all we're doing is reinforcing what the CDC already tells us to do.
I will point out this document exactly. Yeah, because the only reason why I use the word declarations is because that lets a colleague use the word proclamation.
Right, right, right. And I, and I think, uh, Clint, right now, what, what I'm here for this board is that they're not quite ready to make it almost like an official document and, and, uh, leave it open until our next meeting, which is Tuesday, to see, see how we're doing. Yeah, may, maybe, uh, maybe all of a sudden it's, everybody's just doing what they shouldn't be doing all along. And, uh, maybe make it a little more official, uh, at our next meeting. Not a mandate, but, but still, you could, you could have a document that, uh, you know, we signed and, or I signed that, that, that says basically what we've been talking about already. So, uh, but anyway, uh, we need to have a motion if we're going to have one.
I'll make a motion that the city move forward with a declaration encouraging the use of the patient covering. And, uh, I haven't had time to look at all of the language, but the motion would be that we take a stance of encouraging our public, our visitors, to follow the CDC guidelines, which part of that is wearing a cloth covering when you can't social distance.
Okay.
If we can less send the language.
So, you, you're not, uh, you're not, your motion not for a declaration, but just a motion?
I, I think we can make this a little, uh, less wording. And I think that the attorney would definitely weigh in on, on, on that. I'm afraid it seems a little, a little heavy handed. But I, I'm fine with making a motion that, that speaks to the encouragement of the city in moving forward and encouraging our visitors and our public to wear the mask in accordance with the CDC guidelines.
Okay, as a motion. Second. Uh, we have a second, but go ahead, we're open for discussion. That's correct. Okay. Uh, Commissioner Ashbrook, Mr. Langston brought that up earlier in, in his discussion, and, uh, he, he reiterated that with the, the number who have recovered, the number that were out of town, and it left a small number of us locals. He, he had that information. And that's, uh, uh, that'll be reflected, I'm sure, in the minutes. Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, is this going to be drafted or do we want it for the next meeting, or are we going to vote on it?
This is strictly a motion to encourage folks to wear masks and follow the CDC guidelines. Okay, I'm good. That's, I'm, if I'm.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. All right, any more discussion? Any discussion coming up, please? Ma'am, sign your name and, and state your name.
Hi, I'm Todd Goldman. And, um, my concern is all the, all the tourists. And I, I walk down the boat ramp twice a day. I go to the marina. There's hardly any other place. This morning it was Texas, Texas, Louisiana, Alabama. And I just, I want to close the boat ramp down because, for one, it's just been so crazy and they're not, they're not, they're just throwing trash. I pick up trash all the time. But they don't, they don't respect our city. And, um, I'm just worried they're bringing it here. And, um, so I, I, I like the idea of closing the boat ramp, though I know that maybe this is the biggest time for, you know, the tourism or whatever. But, um, anyway, that's my worry.
Yeah.
I wanted to go home.
Thank you, we appreciate that. They're not going home. And, and I, my, Ms. Goldman, my statement to one of the gentlemen that asked me to bring up closing the boat ramp was this, they're here anyway with their boats. They're going to stay here all week long. I would rather have them put their boat in and go out in the bay for eight hours than be walking around town infecting everybody. So, that's kind of my, my thinking, uh, in that regard, but a lot of what you said is, I agree with. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oh, same side, motion passed. I vote, I think.
Okay.
All right, we move on, uh, to the Frank Faye Park gazebo, better known as the pier. It's made by going up, that's called a pier. But anyway, uh, Jim, you want to take that?
Yes, sir. Last Thursday, we did open up our antique 2020 dancer five. This was the third time we actually went out to bid for Frank Faye Park gazebo. Uh, as most realize in town, it's an iconic piece of Fort St. Joe. It was referred to as the city pier when I was a kid. If you flip over to page one, we gave only received one bid. Uh, the bids are $38,055 to actually demo the existing or damaged pier that's in place now. And then $298,426 would be to put it back, very similar to the structure for Hurricane Michael. So, that was the one bid we got on the price tag. The price come down substantially on there, so we are within striking distance if this wishes the board to reconstruct the city pier or gazebo. Flip over to the headout I handed to you. Uh, do have a breakdown of the items that we are working through after Hurricane Michael. And if you'll flip down to the fourth item, it says Page Park to Bid. What we did is this is a breakdown of the money that we believe will become available for, and we do not have all this money today. $67,000 is insurance money that, uh, that is, has been secured for the actual pavilion. If you'll look over, slide over, $30,000 is an additional depreciation that Mr. Corr has been indicating that we will be able to get from insurance if we rebuild. Okay, so you got 67 and 30, those two. 67 and 30,000 potentially more from insurance. Slide over to FEMA. FEMA has not been finalized at this point, and we have not received this money. But based on the numbers we have so far, they're indicating they would potentially give us $144,000, which will be the 75%. And then we would have a match with the state, 25% of broken half, 12.5% for the city, 12.5% for the state, total of $48,000. What does this all mean? At the end of the day, if everything was aligned, stars were aligned perfectly as to what we know today, you're looking at $289,000, okay? Money out of pocket for city, if everything held true, would be approximately $34,000 because your bid you're looking at is 298. And you've still got part of your match, call it $10,000 additional, that's not covered under potential money we have coming in. So, at this point, what we need to do is we need to be thinking about, do we want to put the city pier back together? We bid it out three times, it is iconic, or suggest to the board to put the city pier back together?
I had a call last week from a gentleman that didn't know we were bidding it out, and uh, he grew up here and, um, he was wanting to, uh, to start a fun, fundraising drive to build it back even before we, uh, we knew what we were doing. Because it's, it's an icon of the city, it's, most of the sunset picture you see, you got that pier in the background, uh, and it's well received. But, uh, I mean, it's a non-budget item, it'll end up costing us about $35,000, uh, after insurance and FEMA, is that correct, Jim?
Yes, if all goes well, we're still at $35,000.
$35,000, so, so to, I'd like to see it built back. When, when it came in as 450, it went way down on my priority list of important things to come back. This is a lot more encouraging to me. I, I would like to figure a way that we can make it work for the public. It just shows that we're just getting rid of remnants of Hurricane Michael and, and progressing, uh, with, with building our, we'll call it our infrastructure back. And, uh, but I believe it's the staff to figure out a way that we can do it.
Is it an option to move forward with the demo while we buy ourselves so tight to just make a decision on the rebuild part?
So, that's a very interesting statement, and I would, Jim, you want to respond to that? We've got $67,000 in the bank from insurance. Uh, it's going to cost us, what, $38,000 removing?
We'll be more happy to call it there. We did bid it out both ways for the option to do it. Now, as far as how long after the demo they were holding for, I, more likely, depending on, you know, what kind of equipment they have on staff, because they're talking about dedicating equipment to do it. So, I can make some phone calls, try to have some answers to that. I mean, how much time they would give us to make that final decision to rehab after the demo, I can bring that to them and find out, and maybe answer in a couple of days, by the next week.
Yeah, I'd like to know because we were in agreement, and, and even the people that did, this company and the two prior, all agreed that they would not be able to use the existing islands. So, I would be comfortable with going ahead and approving the demo as long as it did not increase the bid price. And, and I get it, they're going to have a lot of their equipment on site, so they're, they may not want to do it that way.
Yeah, because I don't know whether Lee kind of is to get equipment, if they want to have to get order their equipment, or order up their kits and all that stuff first, to have a way, I'm not sure the logistics over there, but I'll be more happy to give them a call and find out.
Well, why, why don't we do this? You, you've a motion to be made to accept a, a demo, move forward with the demo, and then that allowed him to reach out to them, and if they say they can do it, turn them loose, and we won't have to wait until next Tuesday.
And one question I have, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The design is based on what was actually there previously?
Very similar, you know, you have some new standards that you might do, I believe. It's very, very similar with, it's a lot more recent starting structure on there, but yes, it's very, very similar.
Same footprint, in other words, same square footage, that type thing. I guess that's what I'd be interested in. But, uh, I think it'd show progress just by getting that ugly bottom and everything out of it.
Oh, yeah, that has to be done, no matter if we rebuild it or not.
Yeah, you're right.
My only, you know, concern is, are we going to definitely rebuild the gazebo, or do we want to take some of that funding and move it to the other side of the boat landing and maybe build the observation deck that was discussed and presented at last meeting? I don't want to tie up all that money on the gazebo if we're actually thinking about this observation deck. That's the only reason I don't want to rush into it.
And I think we really need to make a decision on the rebuild sooner than later because remobilization costs, if you were to, if we were to say that, you know, if we want to give them six months to consider this, I don't think they're going to be able to hold that price for six months. But that means moving, putting the food bag, remobilization.
That bottom line, that's got to come out.
Yeah.
If we say we're not rebuilding the gazebo, do we want those islands there, which could be a hazard at night, bugs coming in and that type thing? I mean, they've got to come out regardless of if we're going to build or rebuild. So, we've got a decent price here, we've got the money, so why don't we see if he would, see if he would do it? And we won't worry about him, price going up as we go down later if it does, and that's our answer, we'll start looking at, at building a, a type gazebo on land that wouldn't require the specialized equipment than, uh, bloody equipment that you'd have to have to build here.
Sound like what we're moving towards is going to get it tore down? Find out how much time we have to make a decision on the rebuild.
Yeah.
Just one more concern. I, I'm, I, in the beginning, I liked the idea of moving it toward land and, and saving some money, but when you think about it, I think we're on, end up spending more in the long run and possibly having to dredge in that area because that's, right up under there, it's pretty, pretty shallow. We got that channel that goes through there, or we'd have to put some kind of markers or something in there, so.
Yeah.
I don't know, there's other things to think about.
Yeah.
If we wanted to widen it or whatever.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else? Need, need a motion to, to go forward with the, uh, with the gazebo and, uh, reach out to R.J. Gorman and ask him to, uh, we'd accept his bid on the demo.
Because it was two completely separate bids, correct?
Yeah, so you had an option. Their initial bid was, they put it together was $38,055, $36 for the demo, and if you want to have a demo and put back to almost the same point, you can.
I'll make the motion to accept the low and only bid to demo the islands at the city pier.
As a second?
I'll say.
Second, Mr. Lowery. Commissioner Ashbrook, are you on board with that? All righty, any more, any discussion, discussion from the public? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oh, same side. All right. Get that cleaned up, and if we have to, we can put some little buoys or markers out there, Commissioner Lowery, to, we probably need to do that anyway. Those other ones, I think Mr. Woodford there, somebody, maybe Bill, if you put those bill. Thank you. You know how to do it? We can do it again.
I think they need to be moved anyway.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Bill. All right, um, let's see, we've got citizens to be heard. Ms. Goldman, you have anything else you'd like to add? Oh, okay, thank you. Bill, you got anything?
I would like to say.
All right, come right on down. Sign in and state your name, please.
I can make it up here? In regards to the pier, um, talking to a lot of folks around town, I think it's highly important, I wouldn't build that back. And we can also value engineer the design possibly with a contractor and make a save $30,000, $40,000. I, I haven't seen the design and know what's there. We all want to be a big design and last forever.
Sure.
But I think it's, um, the comments I see in here in town, social media, that, that's probably like the number one of most in town that have built back. I think it's important time to get it done, but.
I concur. And, uh, we can get a fundraiser just like we did in Lighthouse way back when if we need to, and I think a lot of people would participate in it. And, um, so, okay.
I might be surprised how much money the city could do, uh, you know, something put on the door, uh, city hall to get it started, to let people know there is a fundraiser, not like immediately.
Right, right. Uh, but, but I think, uh, getting it demoed right now would be a step in the right direction. And, uh, and, uh, I think if we had to bid it out one more time with, with no cost to demo, it, it, uh, actually may come in cheaper, you know, may have more people bid on it. So, uh, uh, I, I'm glad we moved forward, guess what, that's all I had to say.
Sure.
Mayor, do you have one other thing to say now? We moved forward at Lighthouse, you know, lots of kids here come last week, some kids were moved forward, we got staff that had worked on trying to preparation, but it is the plan is to get it open next.
Okay, all right. Okay, any, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I got one, uh, question online from Mr. Parker, wanting to know if they can have the farmer's market this weekend?
Uh, it's out and open, we've been having it. I don't, I don't, um, see any restrictions right now. Uh, we just encourage them to wear masks.
Say it.
All right, anybody, any commission items?
Hey, I would like to mention that I took the time to visit the, um, Washington Gym Summer Program.
Yeah.
And, and was very impressed with the activities, the counselors, the staff, and the precautions that they were obviously following, so.
Good, very good, very good.
You know, I went out, I went out a couple of days, I went out there a couple of days, it's, it's a nice program, they've got, they're doing a really good job.
Good, good deal. Anything else? I, I just, go ahead, sir.
Um, I know you guys probably getting a phone call too, but BCC needs to, um, tighten up on picking up, uh, being, I'm getting phone calls, I've got a phone call and.
They've been sitting there for a while.
They haven't been, I haven't seen them in about a month.
All right, hey, please reach out to them.
Yes, sir.
Jim, we talked about it, we just getting them to do it.
Yep, and, and they're a little bit, all of my house, some of the regular dogs pick up too.
It's mine.
In the downtown area, so some of the business folks are complaining and, and rightly so.
How often are they required to pick up the dumpster there by the fish plate table?
I believe, Commissioner, we have them to pick it up, see, two or three times a week.
I would like to see if we can get them to pick it up daily. That's what we first envisioned, that's what we discussed, and, uh, I was glad they moved the, the canister dumpster closer, but it has got to be picked up on a daily basis. That's including Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah, it's not too good down there for them.
No, it's not that bad if it's, uh, you know, every day, but if they miss it a couple days, yeah, it, it makes a big difference.
Uh, only I've got, um, um, glad our city employee that tested positive, uh, is back and, and recovered. All the city employees got tested, uh, there were no positives, uh, in the city employees, anybody had been in close contact with the individual. And, uh, so, so we lucked out, I think, and, uh.
I think confirmed everybody that got tested that day negative?
I, I, y'all hadn't gotten your, you hadn't got your results by. I, I, y'all hadn't gotten your, you hadn't got your results back?
No.
Well, I stand corrected, I'm sorry.
They don't call you if you're negative.
They don't call you.
It's not a real good policy.
It's not a good policy, but, yes.
I spoke with Brittany yesterday, and she said they used several different labs, because they had provided them with the kits, they had sent them to the labs, the labs are backed up with all the testing, and one of our other employees checked today and still no results. You may call and ask, and if they have it, they will give it to you, but they do not have a lot of the results at this time.
So, and you guys got tested last Tuesday?
Thursday.
Oh, it was Thursday, and today is Tuesday. Okay, should definitely know something tomorrow.
They said seven to ten days minimum.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Now, it used to be three to five.
Yeah, they told me three to five when that, when I was doing.
They're, they're severely backed up.
Our city employee, you referred to, it took them seven days to be involved.
Okay, well, my statement should say, I hope everybody that got tested was negative.
Forty-four, we have forty-four.
Yeah, so that, that's my, my hope, and, uh, everybody's been careful. And we do know that everybody that was in contact with our employee got tested.
Yes, sir, we did contact all of them. Everybody that's come to the commission meeting, all of our department heads, and we had our department heads encourage any employee that wanted to get tested this year.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Ashbrook, you got anything? He may be gone.
He's there.
Is it? Okay, you, you got any fa- final words? All right, sir. Thank you very much. All right, I'll entertain the motion with adjourned, and thank you all for coming. All right, we are adjourned.
You good, Richie?
Yeah, I thought he did.
It's nice to have a backup.
Yeah, I just.